We heard from a few parents, online comments, follow the science, follow the science. But we sit here and quote governmental institutions. Follow the science means listen to the health experts. In today's world we live in, people turn on the television and depending on what they want to hear, they turn a certain station on. Depending on what news they want to, you know, that they believe in, they turn on this. The same thing right now, when people go to Google information, I'm not questioning anybody. I mean, but, you know, when people go to Google information, looking for information, they pretty much come with information that they want to hear. So I have something here.
Trustee Barry, before you get to that one, we're at just about 10 o'clock.
I put a motion on table to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Support.
We need a roll call.
Yep, roll call vote please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mazup? Yes. Trustee Petliczka?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes. Please continue.
Yes, okay. There's an article here that came out from American Incident Research. And it's by Dr. Paul Alexander, Dr. Howard Tenenbaum, and Dr. Parvez Dara. Long article, but they actually summarize it for us in the beginning. It says, "Children do not readily acquire SARS-CoV-ide. They are of very low risk. They don't spread it to other children or teachers or endanger parents or others at home." This is the settled science. This is their opinion. "In the rare cases where a child contracts COVID virus, it is very unusual for the child to get severely ill or die. Masking can do positive harm to children. Masking can do positive harm to children." That's why I asked that question. As it comes to some adults, but the cost benefit analysis entirely different for adults and children, particularly younger children. Whatever arguments there may be for consenting adults, children should not be required to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Of course, zero risk is not attainable with or without masks, vaccines, distancing, or anything other medical advice may develop or governmental agencies can impose. So, again, depending on what you want to believe, you can find that information. I got a question, then I'll wrap up here. I got a question for our great nurse. If... I believe in masks and I'm vaccinated. I'm the nerd that was at Cedar Point a couple of weeks ago outside with my mask on. You know how when you get into a zigzag line, there's 2,000 people around me? I didn't feel comfortable putting my mask on. But that's my choice, okay? With that being said, I'm an older guy, I'm around some younger children, I got my mask on, and possibility a five or six-year-old probably came into contact. What are the chances of me catching that virus with my mask on?
Less than if you had it off.
Exactly, yeah. But what are the chances? When we hear the survival rate of a child is 99 point high number and, you know, I support teachers, I believe, I want to continue supporting teachers, but are our teachers really at risk? And I know what you just said, are they really, really at risk? What are, I mean, what are the numbers? To say less than, that's, I mean, okay, yeah, you're right. But what are the chances of that teacher that's fully vaccinated with a mask on of contracting the virus?
Well, I don't know that I have specific numbers for you, but I can tell you how things changed for me at the end of the summer school session. The summer school session, like I said in the very first part of our summer school, we had no cases. We didn't get notifications. And then the last two weeks of summer school, they started coming in. And what happened was, there was more movement in the summer school program. It was not like a normal school year. This was a supplemental program. So the students weren't sat in seats for hours and hours at a time, and they had more movement in the classroom. I had notification that I had a student that tested positive, and we contact traced. And what ended up happening was, because there was more movement, it was much more difficult to pinpoint which children would be considered close contacts. Now, prior to, in the regular school year, if we had a case come up in a classroom, we could contact trace from that based on seating charts. And we would look at that six-foot circle, who fell within that six-foot circle for more than 15 minutes, and those students would go out on quarantine and watch for symptoms. We didn't have that many kids that, in the grand scheme of things, that we had to quarantine because our administrators set up the classrooms with a six-foot distance and we had masking. So those layers of mitigation limited the number of kids that we would have to take out on a quarantine based on an exposure in the classroom. However, in the summer school, I had one student that popped up positive. Within three days, I had a second, and two days after that, I had a third. There was spread in the classroom. And it was something that we hadn't seen last year. So this is Delta, that is much more transmissible, and we are seeing that. It was evidence to me. What was upsetting to me at that time was that was the first time that I had to quarantine an entire classroom. The decision was made based on the fact that we couldn't pinpoint specifically which children were, and this wasn't, this is, you have to understand, this is more movement. This was, the type of program that this happened in allowed for more movement. And when I couldn't pinpoint who would be close contacts, I said, "The whole class has to go. They just have to go." With a few days left of summer school, the fun stuff, the very end of the program, the reward for making it through, we had to shut the whole classroom down. Then we had another notification the next morning, and then another one the next day. So what happened was, I lost an entire class of students based on that exposure, and then we had three cases in one classroom. So it is concerning, and the goal is to keep the kids in school. The mask is going to allow that to happen because the guidance currently says that if I have a positive contact in the classroom, we need to find that close contact, which is that six-foot circle. But what they've done for us in the school system is given us a three-to-six-foot range. That's changed from last year. So going into the school year, we now have a three-to-six-foot range. If both children are masked and they are determined between three and six feet, they get notified, the parent, families would get notified that they are close contact, that they can continue to be in school because we have the masking and other mitigation measures in place in the classroom. So ultimately, with the guidance that we have to follow from the Health Department because this is a communicable disease, and so the process is dictated by them, what we need to do, I can't just say to this, "You don't have to quarantine," and then risk exposure for someone else. This is something that we have to follow, and the guidance says, three to six feet, both people masked, kids can stay in school. If I have a child that is unmasked and I have another student that is masked, they will quarantine. So we have a potential to be missing days and days of school. And you could have the family that has a child that has a mask on and the other one doesn't, and you could potentially have this child out for multiple sessions of the day. So it is very hard decision to make, but it was evident to me in the last two weeks of summer school that I ended up quarantining three full classrooms in the last week. I never did that the whole school year. We had individual students. So much more concerning this year.
Yeah, I know you do a great job with the follow-up.
Yeah, so...
Okay. So how severe did the children, I mean, how severe were the children's symptoms?
I'm sorry, say it again.
How severe were the children that you have to quarantine?
Thankfully, as, well, as far as I knew at the time, the kids were managing well, which they typically do. However, it was spread through their households. So not only did we have students coming up positive, it also spread in the household with vaccinated parents and unvaccinated parents. So it was something that you could see happening, but also spreading and spirering out in other directions and affecting more people. And then you have the parents who, some of them were asymptomatic, tested positive because their student, their child was positive, they went to go test. And then I had others that were feeling very sick. So it ranges. It's just so difficult to say. How is it going to affect one and the other? It doesn't make any sense. That's the scary part.
Sure, sure.
Trustee Perry. Sorry.
My last question, and the question was asked earlier, is this something we're going to vote on? It's not on agenda for us to vote on it. So, I know it's labeled a recommendation, so I'm assuming what's going to happen. I guess the question becomes, and I'll address it to Dr. Maliko, when do you feel that it's safe to lift the mask mandate for our district?
We'll be looking at the...
What numbers are we looking at?
What's that?
What numbers are we looking at?
We'll be looking at the data that was presented tonight, and if those numbers go down, including, it was mentioned about, you know, information on hospitalization rates, other things that have been going up, we've been seeing them going up, we'll take those into consideration along with the spread. The Delta variant, you know, has put, I mean, two months ago, I was very, very excited about Star School. I'm still excited. But that is now with some cautiousness because of the fact of this variant that's ramping up. Dr. John Erz is the Delta variant. You know, it is reality. He was, he was fully vaccinated, by the way. So this is, you know, you talk about spread in the household and the families, and I'm not going to comment further. Ms. Artis said I could make those comments, but, you know, explain to me how this contracted. So that's just one story that I just heard. So those are real stories happening. And so for me, I would just say that I don't want a mask mandate either, but I wore it all last year, I got used to it. And if it's going to keep students in schools, I think that's the way to go. And when the data comes down, when I talked to Dr. Hamami, I mentioned, you know, the vaccination rates are not high enough yet to say we're safe inside within the Wayne County area in Dearborn. So once the vaccination rates start going up, yes, then we'll start looking at, and that's where we thought we were going with our staff. I want to commend our staff for, you know, close to, we're pretty confident that there's about 80% of our staff vaccinated. I wish we could get the entire, you know, community and the students and everyone vaccinated, so we're going to continue. So I think that we're going to look at vaccine rates, positivity rate, we're going to look at the chart that's been given by the CDC.
Case rate.
Case rate, and those will be all conversations that will happen on a regular basis to determine whether or not we continue with the masks. And so what I would say, the one thing I will say that was different last year from the vote, and obviously it's the pleasure of the board, there is no state mandate that says you have to vote on mitigation processes. Last year, you had to vote every month on the mode of instruction because of the state law, and that was required.
I was just clarifying because it was gentleman asked, point-blank question.
Yeah.
Is this going to be up to the board? Of course, everything's up to the board, but it's not, just to clarify that it's not on today's agenda.
It's not.
That's all.
Yeah, oh, okay, I appreciate, yeah.
Yeah, there was a question earlier, directed question.
Gotcha.
Want to make sure.
Sure. And I think people kind of, because last year, they remember every month we used to vote, you know, but that was different because that was, are we hybrid, are we going for, but we never had votes on mitigation processes last year. This was just on actually the mode. And this year, we can't go hybrid. We can do the virtual, which is allowed for the public, I'm commenting, or we can do in-person. We don't have any other provisions for a hybrid model or anything unless the state changes the people accounting.
Trustee Petliczka.
That, that was what I was going to be bringing up, is that, on my understanding from the state rules now, a, if we have an issue where we have to quarantine the whole building, say, it runs rampant through, we still have that 75% student attendance that is now kicked back in. We no longer have those fuzzy numbers when we, last year. We also can't just all of a sudden flip and say, "Okay, we're going to go back to Zoom meetings or Zoom classrooms," because they're not counting it anymore, is what I heard. They're having, or at least they're trying to eliminate that as attendance days that we had last year with the shortened days and all of that. Everything's got to go back to five days in-person. If the, if the only way to achieve that effectively is with everybody masking, because then everybody's got this barrier going on, and I'm not going to use the rubber glove and the ice bucket. What I heard, what I heard was Swiss cheese. You have slices of Swiss cheese with holes. One piece of Swiss cheese, you'll have a lot of holes. You throw another piece of Swiss cheese on it, going in an opposite direction, the holes start to cover up and close up. You throw another one on it, that's the layering process, it's closing up all those holes. Experimenting with having kids going into the buildings, some masked, some not masked, you got a couple of issues going on. One, especially with the younger crowd, they're going to say, "Well, God, half my classmates aren't wearing one, why should I?" And they're going to start to not do it, and it's going to be even tougher to keep it going in the classroom. Number two, you're going to have a potential for those people who are infectious or not even symptomatic, spreading infection, only partial protection is available with the masking only being on a select few in the building. You're going to end up losing seat time pretty quickly if this thing goes the way it's been going down south. And what I've been looking at is what's going on down in Florida and Texas and Mississippi and Tennessee and Georgia. And they opened up their doors last week, a couple of weeks ago, and they got 20,000 kids. They've got, we don't even have the staff, if we start losing staff, to substitute in. We'll close, we'll have to close, and that's what was happening down south as well. They, the kids might not get very sick, but if your staff can't come back in, you still can't hold a class time if you don't have the teachers or the custodians or the engineer to operate the buildings. It's not all just about your own personal space because your personal space is now spreading into somebody else's space. And that's why we have smoking bans, what I was starting to talk about.
Trustee Petliczka, we're at 10:15.
Put a motion on table to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mazup? Yes. Trustee Petliczka?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll just wrap it up. The smoking, why they have a ban on smoking or other things? It's your personal right to smoke if you want and infect your lungs. But when they found out that that secondhand smoke was affecting other people outside of that circle, that's when they put, the public health became more important than your personal liberty. And they put, and they put laws in place. Well, masking is going to have to compensate in the same way. We have a public health situation. If everybody masks and they all do it right, hopefully we can clamp down on this thing a lot faster and move past it with vaccinations and for those who are willing to get it. And I know everybody's got an opinion on everything. But the fact is, is that if we want to keep the kids in school, and actually, we're going to have to keep the kids in school, and it's the best thing to do is keep the kids in school, then we're going to have to work through this and hopefully work through it in as short a period of time as possible.
Trustee Watts.
Dr. Maliko, how often, and you were saying that you're going to keep an eye on the numbers, and I think that's what we're all, I think everyone's wondering, okay, at what point then can we say we don't need the mask? So I guess how often do you and the, and the, I think it's the crisis team, meet to kind of evaluate that, or is it a daily, is it something that's always on, on your mind daily, or is it like a weekly meeting?
Well, it's always on the weekly cabinet agenda, and then the crisis team meeting, we had several, I think we had about four or five meetings this summer with just the crisis team, which is the broader group, which we do have some of the union heads on that, including other staff, including nurses that are on that. But we're basically, I mean, I can just tell you that the, for the entire year and a half, all that's been on there is COVID data on all of them. In fact, it's a permanent stamp on my meeting agendas for the cabinet.
Right, so by some pressure fingers, right? So we start seeing that maybe we've hit the peak, and we start seeing the slide down. So parents don't have to necessarily wait until next board meeting to hear, okay, maybe we can start scaling back those layers a little bit.
Well, it's one of those things that the nurses are looking at every week. So we get the reports from the Health Department, they come out on Tuesdays, and then they're shared with the crisis team and the executive cabinet and with yourselves. So we are constantly keeping our fingers on the pulse of where we're at, what we're seeing in our communities. And, you know, I think everybody, we can all agree that we want to get to a point where we don't have to worry about the masks. When we start seeing the case numbers dropping and we don't have the numbers that we're seeing right now, which are completely different from what we saw three weeks ago, which is how quickly this changed. And so those, those will be things that we'll be looking for, also with guidance from the Health Department. It's unfortunate that school boards are being made to make these decisions when this is a health issue that we should be getting guidance on from the health advisories. And every district is in this position, and we're all doing our best to decipher the data. Like you said, we're not epidemiologists. We're doing the best with what we can, trying to make decisions. And, and hopefully we get to the point where this numbers drop and we feel safe enough to remove them in the classrooms, that we're not having large amounts of kids being sent out. If I could, I just wanted to address to trustee Barry, you had asked about the safety of face masks. And on July 18th, 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics, who are dedicated to the health of children, issued a recommendation that, that students should be doing universal masking. It says face masks can be worn safely by all children aged two years and older, including the vast majority of children with underlying health conditions with the rare exception. So the Academy of Pediatrics is saying it is a safety issue that they can wear.
My point was, when you go doing, we're not the experts. Hopefully, the experts will step in and make the decision soon. My point was that if I want to watch certain news, listen to certain news, I go to MSNBC. If I'm not happy with that information, I go to the other station.
People don't look. It's called confirmation bias.
Slow down, slow down, slow down. I saw the report you just quoted, but I also was putting something else out there.
Yep.
So to kind of confirm what the parents are saying, they're doing their research and they're seeing something completely over telling them.
Yes.
So they have the, you know...
That's the beauty of the internet, right? Not always.
I mean, a lot of people were saying that the parents did this last meeting, stuff like that. No, that's freedom of speech, and they have the right to question us. I don't care if it's one parent, you know? We've heard parents say, "Oh, they're the troublemakers." No. We, the seven of us, represent the whole city of Dearborn, you know, the taxpayers. So if one parent comes up, they have the right to speak. What happened at the last meeting, I think we had some new parents, they came into the school board meeting, they had no protocol, but they did a great job today, and we're moving forward.
Trustee Mazup, did you have any additional questions?
Yes, I, I'd like to echo the comments by trustee Barry. Everybody who speaks at the board respectfully is welcome. We welcome those opinions, even if I don't disagree, even if I don't agree with them. It's the, it's a matter of democracy, and it's very important and crucial to our decision making. My question is, what happens if a student doesn't comply with wearing masks in schools? And are we providing masks to students who believe or even students who we think their masks are worn out and need replacement to students?
We have, we're still working on, I mean, the reality is it's going to be a requirement. So we're going to try to coach and work with parents to, you know, have people wear masks, just like if someone was violating other rules in the school, we'd communicate with parents and work with them. We have, I believe, Mark said, we're going to be ordering more masks. We have, we still have in the warehouse 40,000 reusable approximately, and we have two, over 200,000 masks of the disposable masks. And then we have another order that's on the way. So we're willing to, I mean, I know a lot of students bring their own. I saw that in the summer program, but we're going to provide it. So if they forget to bring it, or if you forget to bring it at the door here, we have available.
Drops off in a mud puddle.
Yeah, yeah. We, we have extras available, and we're going to order more so that we have a lot of them.
I guess a follow-up question would be that...
Hold on one second, Mr. Trustee Barry. I want to make sure trustee Mazup gets all his questions, in case I don't see his hand.
Yeah, those are all my questions. My, my previous questions have been asked, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Barry.
Follow-up question is like, when teachers are on vacation, teachers are at weddings, at parties, inside the houses, and they're not wearing masks, then I got sent some pictures early, there was a meeting here in this board meeting where some employees were not wearing a mask. What do we do there? I would hope it's the same thing, what's good for the goose is...
I mean, we, as a district, we have the ability to, you know, require in our buildings. We would think that and hope and strongly encourage everyone who's outside to be role models. That's one of the reasons why we also didn't want to pin students against students in making the decision. That weighed in the decision of saying, it makes, you know, we don't want to have that kind of situation going on. I will say, and I'm just going to say it, I mean, I walked in, you know, and I'm used to wearing the mask, I still have it with me, I bring it in, but it was a little confusing when the recommendations were, if you're, you know, it was slowed down. So people walked in, and guess what? There was some confusion in June and July when the recommendations came out that you don't have to wear, and it came out from the state. So that could be part of it too, is people are maybe now getting accustomed back to. But I will say, just for me personally, I always have it with me, personal choice, I have it with me in Target and everywhere else I go. But, you know, that's my choice, it's not required by the state law, but that's what I'm doing, and, you know, a role model, and we would ask our staff to be role models in the community, but the reality is, is there's no mandate out there. We're, we're making the decision in the, you know, for our students.
There's no mandate out there, but we're asking everybody inside of our buildings to wear masks.
I'm sorry, I...
There's no mandate out there. State's not mandated, but we're asking everybody to wear masks.
In our buildings.
Inside our buildings. But I mean, there was a meeting like a week ago where there was some staff members that weren't wearing that mask. And, you know, forget that part, I'm saying, how are you going to handle that when employees don't wear their masks?
Well, with staff...
If you're going to make the little seven-year-old wear a mask, what about the adult?
With staff, we'd address it if they're in our building. We would address it just like we did last year. And in fact, just so you know, I'll just tell you, just to remind people, because again, people are coming back and they heard about the mask, and some people, I think, were just confused because we hadn't come up with our recommendations yet, and in the summer program, over the summer, because the state lifted the mask mandate. But I'll just tell you, in our general administrative, we had it in big colors, masks are required when we went to our meeting on Thursday. There's signs all over our buildings, we didn't pull them down. And so I think we just got, I think in some cases, people were maybe unsure because we were, we were phasing it in, and then we did say at the last meeting that we were strongly recommending it. So people may have heard that at those meetings, that's possible. I think now that once it comes out, and once, you know, we have this meeting today, once, you know, tomorrow, as long as we're going to continue to move in this direction, then there won't be a question. But I do think, in all honesty, you know, the human beings came in because they heard different messages that happened all summer, and that's the way I would believe, is that they, they meant well, but, and again, I don't know the specific meeting, but that, so that's why I even reminded administrators that, hey, you know, you have to have it on, and I think we just have to remind people in these other meetings that, yes, it is, just like we did, and we're going to be courteous, so. Sorry, Jim, I was a little longer on that.
No, that's okay. And is Jillian? Yes, you're still here. So I'd like to get to the points that were brought up earlier about sports. And we know that the MHSAA has no mask requirement. What are we doing for the indoor sports? Do the students need to wear masks while they're either practicing or playing? And I would assume that the spectators would need to wear masks, but then do we give the students some leeway if they've just come off of a practice or out of the game? Give them a few minutes to get their heart rate back down before having to wear a mask? Do we have that flexibility?
I mean, I don't, my understanding from, we're following MHSAA, and basically, the students do not have to wear a mask when they're competing. My understanding is that, yeah, when they go on the side or they're not competing, then they should put it on. But of course, there's reasonableness, and with reasonableness too, then I would make sure that, you know, if someone, you know, just like if you're breathing, you pull, but then don't be right next to somebody. Step aside, just like the teacher situation that I explained, and we understand that. I mean, we all deal with it as humans, especially if you're running. So no, it is not required, and if you need to step aside and take a break, and if you're outside, then, then there's really no issue. It's the inside, if anything, but there's no requirement. And we've been consistent in following MHSAA, who does follow the state. So that's kind, that is what our team is recommending, that we continue to follow MHSAA.
So the athletes should not need to wear masks whether they're actually in a regular game or in a practice?
Correct.
Indoors or out?
Correct.
Okay.
But, but when they, they go to the side or they're on the bench and they're near their other, you know, during a game, then they should put the mask on. And you see that in the pro ranks, they're doing the same thing for the most part.
I've, trustee Barry?
What about the spectators inside? What about the spectators inside?
So.
I thought I saw it that it's recommended but not mandated.
It's highly recommended for spectators, yes.
So what are we doing?
We're, we're following that as highly recommended as well for spectators.
So we have spectators inside our building that don't have to wear a mask?
Yeah, and we, that can be subject to change. I mean, it's up for discussion. We've had discussion on many items, but right now, we are recommending our team that it's highly recommended that spectators wear them, meaning are not our students. But, I mean, if the board wants me to bring that back to our team, we meet tomorrow. I'm willing to have that conversation.
I'm, I'm going to say that it's probably, you can look at it a little differently. It's not a regular school day where it's a requirement that you be in the classroom. This is an extracurricular activity after school hours, so to speak, voluntary kind of thing. So maybe, you know.
I mean, I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that.
In part of the.
That was part of the thinking.
If the school is not in session.
Right.
And I go in to one of the schools to drop off paperwork, I don't want to wear my mask. What's so different then? The, the point is that this is, just everything is just moving at one time, so, so, I mean.
Well, I, I would assume that if you were going into the school to drop off paperwork, it was during what would be normal operating hours.
Okay.
As opposed to, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not making.
No, no, I'm not just sharing a discussion.
We're, we're at 10:30.
And the same thing, a motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes?
Support.
You guys are going to all hate me by the end of the night.
Trustee Barry?
Can I vote? Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moser, yes. Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not debating you on this, I'm just saying, we have to be fair. We can't have.
Yes.
Something happening in this building completely different than this building.
I agree, though.
We need to be consistent.
Thank you very much, yeah.
I agree.
Trustee McDonald?
I would like that to go in front of the crisis team again for debate or discussion because I think that spectators absolutely should be required to wear masks. They're in our buildings. And part of the reason is, sure, it might be out of, off hours, but we're making our students, the students are coming back in their building, in that building. We do have good ventilation systems, but we still have, this is a virus that we have a lot. There's a lot of things that we don't know about it. If there's people in our buildings, I think that they need to be required to wear masks. I understand the students while they're participating, that's difficult. I think it's something that should be discussed.
We just told the student athletes that we're going to follow MHA SSA rules. And that clearly says that spectators don't have to, something mandatory.
That, but we still can control our own buildings. That's not true.
Hold on, hold on. All right, additional questions?
I have one more question.
Yes, trustee Moser.
If, if a student is quarantined, are they able, is there an option for them to attend via Zoom?
We do not have a Zoom, we're not doing the double link, but we do have Schoology and we'll have to provide work, you know, and communication to those students, just like we did, would, would if students were out for other illness or other reasons. But there is no Zoom option like we had last year, which was different when we were doing the dual virtual in the class at the same time.
So that means no, we're going back to snow days, huh?
But we are, we are assigning work, though.
That was addressed with.
I mean, I mean, we do.
They're being assigned work.
Oh.
Yes.
So i- if, if we were in a snow day or something like that, we do have the ability to go virtual, just, you know, we do have that ability. And remember, we do get up to six days of snow days anyway, so that's a whole other.
Being funny.
It's actually addressed in the last press release. Districts that get in trouble can use this.
Snow, there's snow days.
They don't call snow days.
Any additional questions from this presentation?
Let's move on.
Well, before we move on, the one thing then that I would bring up that's been mentioned a couple of times is, is this something that we would vote on? Now, my concern is if we decide to vote on it, is it something that we would be voting on in each meeting? How do we give the administration flexibility when we don't know exactly what the numbers would be that they'd be looking at? And again, we'd be taking on something that usually is not part of the board responsibilities. It's usually something that's brought by the administration and they ask our opinion and, and if we.
Direction, yeah.
And, and our direction. So would this be an item that the board would want to vote on or would be comfortable?
Some guidelines. There was at least two board members that asked, at what point is it safe to lift the mandate? And we didn't get an answer. We would have to get some kind of guidelines if we're going to vote on it. If you're going to put on an agenda for next month, we would have to get some kind of guidelines.
So it would be more that to, to move forward with, well, I'm sorry, it's not a motion, but that we accept the recommendation? Right?
Doesn't matter who we think at this point, right? It's not on the agenda unless, unless somebody wants to put it on an agenda or put it on the table.
If we were to vote on it, then wouldn't we have to wait for every, every month? As opposed to having flexibility, Dr. Maliko having flexibility to look at the numbers daily or weekly to be able to make that decision, correct? I feel like that would limit, that time is not on our side if we're going to have to wait every month to vote on that.
True, unless we threw in some numbers like we had done previously with the return to school plans.
What are those numbers?
We don't have the numbers.
What are those numbers? We saw, we saw how the numbers went up and I trust the expert saying that it's not safe. Well, what happens when they start going down? At what point can Dr. Maliko pull the trigger and say, wow, things are looking pretty good? He doesn't have to wait the next board meeting.
Can we bring Nurse Candace back up for a second?
And we did that last time where we, we finally said, okay, now we're going to leave it to Dr. Maliko.
We made the decision.
Right.
What the parameters are. We made that decision as a board.
This time we'd be giving more discretion.
That, that was the, the first time. Then, then we moved into the next phase where we said that it would, we would leave, we took the numbers out of the game.
In the beginning, we said.
In the beginning, we did, yes.
At this point is when we can start talking about.
And when we went to hybrid, we then took, we took the numbers out and we said it was Dr. Maliko's discretion.
But now it's the other way around. What, what do we, what do we say?
Well, we either leave it to Dr. Maliko's discretion.
Well, how about we ask Nurse Candace, am I incorrect in thinking that the recommendation is 3% or below means it is no longer community spread, it's contained?
Well, not, not as much contained, but that, the 5% rate of positivity number, basically when you're at 5% or above, it shows a steady rate of community spread, meaning that it's still high enough that we're seeing enough cases in the community to warrant some mitigation measures. When you're under 3%, then you're considered in, in a good place, I guess. So I, we, it hasn't been discussed yet on what sort of parameters we would use. But just let's say for reference, when we were looking back, let me see if I can get back on this. I don't know if I'm going to play with the technology or sorry. If I can get back to my screen or if someone can help me get there quicker, I don't know, I'll keep going back. But when we were, I think here I am. Ah, there it is. Okay, so when we were looking at these numbers here back when we were, the last meeting, when it was strongly recommended that masking continue, we were in a moderate caseload. So looking back in like, let's say, July, we had a low positivity rate and moderate. So the CDC's map and also the one that we've used more from our specific community map, it uses these indicators to show us where we fall. And in the summertime, we did appreciate a low rate of positivity, so we were in a blue zone. And our case rate was in a yellow zone, so that would be like a lower concern. When we moved into the orange and the red, that showed a significant bump in cases. So I, I would say, and I'm, this is, I don't know, maybe this is just my opinion. Again, this is something that has to be discussed. But I say that we are in a safer place when we have a low transmissibility rate and moderate to low cases. And that's only two points, benchmarks that we would be looking at. Obviously, we would want to see a decrease in cases, maybe over the span of two weeks, which is generally what we're looking at when we talk with the health department is trends and are our trends moving in the right direction? So all of that needs to be taken into account. But the thing that I liked about this is that it gave us something to look at, which is what we were missing when we started school year last year. We didn't have direction, we had to find something that we could use. Positivity rate ended up being one of the numbers that came into play just because that is showing what's happening in the community.
Nurse Candace?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we still don't have the ability to break out Dearborn's positivity rate though.
We won't be able to get that data.
Okay.
It just doesn't break it down that way because there's so move, there's so much movement in the city. You have people that work here that may be transmitting. So it's just too hard to pinpoint that, we won't be able to come up with that data.
Just a brief comment too, the difference, you know, the way I see it from last year is the mode of instruction was a huge shift. Are you virtual, are you hybrid? Right now, we're talking about a mitigation technique that wasn't even under any question last year. It was just, these are the mitigation, this is what you need to do. So we are talking about different things from last year. So to me, you know, shifting all virtual is a huge thing and that's where the legislation was. And again, I, I will support, obviously, I support whatever the board would like to do. But I would just say that they're different things right now. You know, it's, it's a technique that our team will recommend and will recommend a shift if we feel that we're getting those recommendations from CDC and otherwise. And we can dig deeper into data. And like I said, I talked to Dr. Hamami today and I can talk to other epidemiologists. That's all that was discussed just on Friday after Wayne County Superintendent meeting. And I could tell you, superintendents are pretty aligned with where, what they see as far as what's needed right now in mitigation. So that's the only thing I wanted to point out. But again, I'm supportive of however the board wants to proceed.
Trustee Watts?
Well, I think, again, I think probably a lot of parents are probably saying, okay, so then when, when is that point where our kids can ditch the mask? And so I would say that you, you know, you and Dr. Maliko have obviously access to data that you will sometimes pass on to us. So I think just knowing that it's going to be constantly monitored that when it is. I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is that there's several bunch, benchmarks, the ICU beds, the transmission per 1,000.
Transmission rate and the case, cases.
So it sounds like there's a couple of benchmarks that maybe during maybe one of the meetings, Dr. Maliko could come up with saying like, this is what we feel would be.
When you approach that.
And hopefully it's done before our next meeting. But the one thing that we need to remember is that this has been an ongoing discussion and they've just come up with these recommendations in the last couple of days. They haven't had a chance to, to come up with the way out yet. So if you can keep sharing information as the group continues to meet so we can share it with our, our parents and the public, that would be very useful.
Yeah, so they can plan accordingly to, right? So they can.
The CDC map just came out actually not that long ago. So it's one of those things that as nurses, we were excited because we want parameters. Give us parameters so we know, again, we're asking non-medical people to decipher epidemiological information and make a decision on safety for people. So we need to have these things in place where we're looking for that information from health experts. And, and this is, I think, a, a step in that direction to kind of assist us in making those decisions.
Yeah, and I think we can all agree that we are looking to in a safe way, right? We're going to add the layers.
Keep the kids.
Keep the kid in schools, that's, that's our number one. And then when we can.
Start drawing.
Yes, exactly.
President Thor, just a real question, a real quick comment about the Michigan Associate, uh, in the High School Athletic Association. That's my issue with them is they are not specialists in, in health. And I don't know, maybe they do have some on their board that can direct them. But that's where I question it. Okay, so that's, that's my concern.
But they're making the rules now, we have to play by them.
Yeah, but they don't have to make the rules when they come to. I think we have some leeway with spectators in our buildings. That's my concern. That's where I disagree with their rule. So I'm just putting that out there.
All right.